And I said, no.
It's now six thirty. I'd like to call this August tenth, two thousand twenty-three, City of Manassas Council Meeting to Order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilor Chakowski?
Here.
Councilperson Thomas?
Here.
Councilman Nestor?
Present.
Councilman Gregor?
Mayor Mosher?
Present.
Mayor Anoda Quorum with Councilwoman Gregor absent.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to ask our councilwoman, Thomas, to give, lead us in prayer.
Stand by our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord, for this day, how you've just watched over us and kept us. We pray that you continue to be with us now as we carry on the business of the City of Manassas, that you just bind us all together on one cord and give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, and a guiding and leading the city, that we will grow more economically sound, and even more sound as a community and as a whole. In Jesus' name we pray, and thank you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask somebody for the review of the minutes and make a motion to accept them. I think everybody's had a chance to.
Mayor, motion to approve minutes of a previous session of July sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for a public comment on agenda items only.
Ernest Telegraphus. Let's begin with, why do we have clear-cut rules on giving permits for organizations not to pay any fees at this Gate of Heaven Church? You guys keep giving away this...
They are, they are a nonprofit.
Okay, so any nonprofit could come here, the word would come out, I could get five hundred nonprofits there, and those, if you guys have to clean up, and then what? You guys would be in a hole. And this is why you don't have money. You gotta have some sort of guidelines. They could be nonprofits, but up to a certain limit. It's like, how many people they expect? How long? You can't just tell them dawn to evening, for twelve hours, there's gonna be debris left. So there should be clear-cut rules of using city property, city property, to some extent, without getting a fee. And I don't care if it's part of one or not. Now, the other thing is, this is for Tony, CFO here. Now, is this my understanding? Every two weeks, we gotta pay seventy-five thousand dollars for payroll? Is that where it's at? It went up? It comes?
Well, it goes up, I think, what there was this last pay, if I remember, it was longevity got paid out the first week of August.
What's longevity?
That is a contractual obligation that they have for years. Is it years of service? I'm sure, it's years of service. They're, for how many years of service they have, they get paid so much, and that is a...
And how many people do we have for that?
Well, you can figure that's the contract, which would be police and would be the street.
No, that's just F. Asme.
Street, Asme. I'm sorry, thank you.
If you don't know how many people, then what's the amount of money that...
The amount of money probably was around, payroll's usually around sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, this is like another ten.
Oh, and brought close to another ten.
And how often does this occur?
Once a year. Is it, am I correct?
Yes.
It is once a year.
Then my last question is, the house insurance payments for retired employees and families. Now, is that once a year too?
No, monthly.
That's every month, eighty-five hundred bucks. Now, if one of them dies, husband or wife, does that reduce the amount that you have to pay, or?
Well, it reconduces the coverage by one person, but as far as you're looking at monetary value, I don't think it really adds up to that much money, because it's more of a, and I wouldn't speak, I didn't negotiate the contract, but I believe it's more of a, when it's a group policy, it's a certain number, I believe, that's encompassed in that group. So if you hit this number, this is your price. If you hit this number, this is your price. So going by one, two, three, or four may not affect anything.
Three minutes is up.
My minutes are up?
No.
Oh, okay, I thought my minutes were up.
No, we're living in a communist state these days.
Ernie, did I answer your question?
No.
Thank you. When I start talking, you should stop the clock.
Okay.
Because I took coming of his time.
I just wanted to tell you, I think you need to correct the minutes, because you passed it. Kevin Accalangelo was paid that same night he was actually cut a check.
The very next day.
And giving to him the next day. And I'd like to know all the speeches that you guys made, because I said, pay the guy tonight. And you guys told me, it can't be done, it has to be done in this week. Explain to me, what is it you know that I've done?
The payment will be approved tonight, but the check was written last week as a result of our purchasing system.
It was done after the meeting, same time. It was done, the check was written right after the meeting.
The next morning it was written.
So the check was given to him the next day, but you guys went through a big spiel about, oh, you can't do that, because under the sunshine law, you guys went into forever. You don't have to turn that on. I'm asking you a question, because you guys created the problem.
And we solved the problem.
You didn't solve the problem that night when it took place.
No, we did not.
You threw him under the bus, which he's been carrying your ass for a long time.
Pino, I should have approved that purchase. I had questions about it. You can blame me for that. It was a long misunderstanding that I had questions about, that, whether they were valid or not, they were my questions. And that shouldn't hold anything else up in front of this council, that's for sure. So, your point about making, it wasn't on the pay of bills, but it was paid the next day?
It was actually, the check was cut that night.
Yes, it was.
No.
Well, my understanding is the check was cut that same night.
We don't have the ability to print checks at night. The clerk is the only one that can print the checks, and she wasn't here that night. It was the next morning.
All I'm telling you is, all the BS that you gave, tried to make me look better, you know, worse than I really act on my own, is that you guys didn't know what the hell you were talking about. You know, McGregor spoke, you spoke, you didn't say nothing. I don't blame you. She spoke, she says she was gonna make the payment guaranteed, she was gonna make sure that he got paid on this meeting. He got paid that day after. So you actually look like an idiot.
We have a purchasing system, and the purchasing system was followed, and those procedures.
But I mean, the business needs to be corrected, because it was fixed that same night.
Anybody else? Oh, anybody have any correspondence they'd like to report?
No, mayor.
In which case, ask the solicitor for his report.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everybody. The only update I have is with the EQ tank and the subdivision. Worked over the last week with the Sewage Authority to finalize the subdivision. They sent over the PDF copy today. They will be delivering the actual maps to city that the Planning Commission will look at first, and then it'll be here in front of council. Once the subdivision has been reported, the city will deed over that portion of the property where the EQ tank will be located to the Sewage Authority as per the agreement.
Thank you. Does the treasurer have a report?
Yes, I do, mayor. Mayor, members of council and citizens of Manassas, this is our report for the month ending July two thousand twenty-three. Garbage fees current, July, three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars year-to-date, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand fifty-four dollars. Budget amount, three hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Garbage delinquent, July, three thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty cents, year-to-date, forty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and three cents. Budget amount, eighty thousand seven hundred and eighty. Amount collected by Portnoy, July, one thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty cents, year-to-date, thirteen thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. That's amount excluding, is included in the above amount for the total delinquents. Ten million interest from Portnoy, July, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents, year-to-date, two thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety cents. Garbage fees collected for two thousand twenty-four, July, five hundred and fifteen dollars, year-to-date, one thousand five hundred dollars, budget amount, one thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Total for July was eight thousand three hundred and three dollars and fifty-eight cents, year-to-date, three hundred and eighty-five thousand eight hundred and two dollars and ninety-three cents. Budget amount, four hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. City real estate taxes, current city real estate taxes, July, forty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-five cents, year-to-date, one million nine hundred and forty-one dollars, nine hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and one cent. Budget amount, two million thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. City taxes prior year collected by city delinquent, year-to-date, eight thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty cents, budget amount, five thousand five hundred and three dollars. Subtotals, one million nine hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-one cents. Delinquent city taxes collected by Westmoreland County, nothing in July, year-to-date, ninety-eight thousand thirty-two dollars and sixty-three cents, budget amount, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars. Tax cutting bureau quarterly received nothing on the Westmoreland. The total taxes year-to-date, two million forty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. Distribution is a falls, year-to-date, city real estate taxes distribution, one million three hundred and fifty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. Budget amount for the general fund was one million four hundred thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. Debt service, year-to-date, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents. Budget amount, three hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and nine cents. Year-to-date, library, forty thousand forty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. Budget amount, forty thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. Parks, one hundred and eighty-five thousand year-to-date, two, or one hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty cents year-to-date, budget amount, one hundred and ninety-one thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and ninety cents. Total year-to-date, one million nine hundred and fifty dollars, nine hundred and fifty-thousand dollars, three hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-one cents. Budget amount, two million thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. Real estate transfer taxes, July, we received seven thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and seven cents, year-to-date, forty thousand two hundred dollars and thirty-seven cents. Budget amount, eighty-three, eighty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Earned income tax, July, received twenty-one thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-eight cents, year-to-date, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand ninety-three dollars and forty-two cents. Budget amount, five hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and eight, ninety-eight dollars. American tile tax, July, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirteen cents, year-to-date, seventeen thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-two cents. Budget amount, twenty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Local service tax, July, we received two thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-two cents, year-to-date, fifty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-three cents. Budget amount, fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Tax certifications, July, we received nine hundred and fifty dollars, year-to-date, fifteen thousand seventy dollars. Budget amount, twenty-one thousand nine hundred and forty. Municipal lien letters, July, we received eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, year-to-date, ten thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Budget amount, fourteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Unsecured payments for line usage account, July, we received nothing, year-to-date, ten thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars. Line usage fee, July, we received ninety-one thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-three cents, year-to-date, five hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents, for a total of four, five hundred and forty-four thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-seven cents. Mayor, that concludes my report for the month of July.
Thank you.
Mayor, motion to accept the treasurer's report for garbage fees and city, city real estate taxes collected for the month of July two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes. This time, I'd like to ask the city controller, she has a report for us?
Thank you, mayor. The general fund, shallory federal savings checking account, bank reconciliation as of July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. The beginning bank balance as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three was eight hundred and forty-two thousand sixty-four dollars and forty-two cents. Deposits made, two hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and three dollars and seventy-six cents. Expenses, three hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-four cents. The ending balance as of July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three was seven hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. Outstanding checks, thirteen thousand eight hundred and six dollars and forty-four cents. There were no outstanding deposits. The reconciliation balance to the bank statement is seven hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty cents. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Well, now's the opportunity I get for talking about some of the things that we did this week. First off, we had the status meetings for the contractors for Phase Three A and Three B of our sewer project. Work is to begin September the fifth, right after Labor's Day. Phase Four Penn Vest is due to be completed along about the end of September. It has been delayed primarily due to unforeseen issues with solid rock and the terrain that they ran into. So a quick, quick top-level view of what's been going on with our sewer project. Phase Three has been split into four phases. Phase Three A was a smaller pipe, Phase Three B was a larger pipe, Phase Three C was the neighborhood lines, Phase Three D is that which crosses railroad tracks. So Phase Three A and Three B are scheduled to be completed by September the fourteenth of two thousand twenty-four. Now, this is all important because you think about the financing of this. You remember the financing? Everybody pays twenty-seven dollars a month? That's what's paying for this. That is where the, we have an interim loan required to take care of that. We use PNC Bank for our, our four-year loan based upon our best information at the time. That will be due in May of two thousand twenty-five. What I'm saying here is, we need to get our sewer work completed by May of two thousand twenty-five, or work with the USDA in order to have some sort of extension to that. And to that end, I've talked to them, and that should not be too much of an issue. But Phase Three C is well on its way. Phase Three C should be well on its way, if not completed, by the time the overall project runs out of time. It's gonna be difficult. Three C is still waiting, is, is, is waiting for the specifications. We'll go out for bid sometime in late September. Will, the bid will be awarded, and then we have until May of two thousand twenty-five in order to get the project completed. So it's gonna be a very tight, tight timeline. I've worked with Todd Colley of the USDA, and it's kind of interesting that we're not the only one in this boat, that everybody's project, when we got our loan, there was a whole bunch of cities all across the country that also got loans for similar-type projects. They were all delayed via, because primarily of COVID and some things like that. The bottom line is, there's very, virtually nobody that he was aware of that is on target for making, for getting their project completed on time. He thought that that would be very possible for us to get some consideration for that, and we'll probably have to take that to do it. That doesn't mean that I'm not interested in keeping the contractors' feet to the fire to make sure that they get this project done as quickly and as expediently as possible. The quicker they get it done, the quicker we can get it financed properly and, and get it taken care of. To that end, I've been going over about seven hundred pages of documents. It talks about the history, the requirements, the plans, the scope of the project. It all boils down to DEP orders. Back in two thousand fifteen, they ordered us to embark upon this process of getting our sewers fixed. The environmental issues and the work was done, there's a lot of issues going on. They, they did this because of environmental issues based upon some camera work that was done back then. And it was estimate, and they set the project back then at twenty-two million dollars, and that's what, to do what would take care of the Phase Four, the Category Four, and the Category Five sewer lines. And that's what we're embarking upon. So keep that in mind. We're basically doing a project based on ten-year-old data on what pipelines were Category Four and Category Five. Category Five is immediate failure is imminent, Category Four is, is close. So, as you recall back, we, well, first off, from my perspective, it's prudent for us to be managing this project tightly. WEC will earn an estimated three-point-one million dollars over the course of this project. It's my objective to keep their focus on that activity, to keep their feet to the fire, to watch the contractors, to earn that money that they're, that we're paying them. And that's what we're gonna keep doing. You also might remember a few months ago, last year, we enacted an ordinance number twelve fifty-nine that allocated this twenty-seven dollars a month that we're, we're getting in from everybody's sewer line. And what that boils down to is about eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents per month is withheld by the Mon Valley Sewer Authority to fund the EQ tank being constructed on parente. If nobody has noticed, it's already several years behind. We've been working on that EQ tank for a long time. Today, about three o'clock this afternoon, two or three o'clock this afternoon, they finally submitted to us the, the subdivision plans for the property that they're gonna be putting this tank on. So we're starting to make headway. Thirty-nine thousand two hundred, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-eight cents per month is being placed in the debt service fund to handle payments which will be required to pay back the fifteen million one hundred and ninety thousand dollars that we borrowed from the USDA. We borrowed that at one-point-one-two-five percent interest, with payments to be made twice a year for two hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-eight cents for forty years. So that thirty-nine thousand three hundred and nine-two dollars and fifty-eight cents we withhold every month from the twenty-seven dollars that we get from everybody, goes into that fund, and that works out exactly right. There's another ten thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents per month, which is placed in the Penn Vest account for repayment of a two-million two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollar loan that was done for one percent interest monthly for a twenty-year period. That requires that we pay back exactly the same amount, ten thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents. So we're putting the money from the line usage account into these things to take care of these loans, exactly as, as required. There's a, any additional funds that, that's left in the line usage account really qualify for line usage qualified projects. And as an example, you gotta maintain the system after you fix it. That money can be used for that. If there's something that's, that was Category Three, One, Two, or Three, that is not addressed in the, the USDA contract, that fails, we have some money to take care of those, those issues as well. So there is some insurance we have to make sure that we have enough money to, to, to do this sewer project properly. As it boils down, today, we have nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents in the debt service fund. Now, remember, that money is dedicated towards paying for the loan, the bond payments that were done in two thousand, I forget the year, many years ago. We took out a loan, that takes care of those, and it takes care of the USDA payment. The line usage account, which qualifies for expenses only to maintain the system, we have six hundred and eighty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars in. So we're well-funded for the sewer project. The real problem is, make sure that it gets done as quickly as possible and on time. Another thing that everybody's gonna notice... Well, I give more time, thank you. So as you, as, one thing that you'll notice tonight is, we don't have our audit report. We were hopeful that we'd have our audit report for the city tonight. It turns out that we got the actuaries from the people that take care of the actuaries earlier this week, like Tuesday of this week. They have to, Cypher and Cypher has said that they don't have time to get those incorporated in the audit and have the present, presentation ready for tonight. But they promised us it'll be here on the meeting of the twenty-fourth, our next meeting that we have. Don Gregor is not here to, this evening, to talk about public places, but I talked to him, and he, he asked that I, you know, with his permission, I want to discuss a couple of items. First off, we're still working with electrical issue in the middle of the walking track at City Park. And to fully, in order to fully comply with electrical codes, we have hired a licensed, licensed electrician. Although we were to use one of the stations, although we were able to use one of the stations this weekend, both power stations were brought up to code and available within a week or two, tops. The Civic Center has received permission from CDBG to utilize allocated funds, including the kitchen. So we can now allocate some money to the kitchen if required. There are also some other issues such as handicap ramp and carpeting that still needs to be addressed. Our city administrator has been conducting weekly meetings with Julian, who's been tasked with scheduling events at the Civic Center. By working with the Westmoreland County Food Bank, Communities That Care, the Youth Board, and Manassas School System, he's able to provide a monthly schedule of events which is posted on the city webpage. I think it's important to understand how important that Civic Center really is to the city. And, you know, I think Julian's really doing a good job at keeping everybody informed and, and activities going there. It really is to provide something for kids in some of the most depressed areas of the city, something to do.
Does the city get insured if somebody falls down?
Yes, yes, we do. A lot's been going on, and I support the, the, I really appreciate the support the city and the council has been in all these different activities that we've got going on. At this point, I'd like to ask somebody to read some, some of these motions we have here.
We'd like to make a motion to approve requisition number eight in the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-six cents for construction phase unpaid invoice number one for the sewer rehabilitation project, Phase Three. Payment requisition and certificate number eight for WEC Consulting Engineers. Payment invoices and materials are attached to this agenda as Exhibit One.
Is there a second?
Second, mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
I can make a motion to approve requisition number nine in the amount of twenty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-eight cents for construction phase unpaid invoice number two for the sewer rehabilitation project, Phase Three. Payment requisition certificate number nine for WEC Consulting Engineers. Payment invoices and materials are attached to this agenda as Exhibit Two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
A motion to exonerate all City of Manassas taxes on the following properties currently owned by the City of Manassas Redevelopment Authority to permit them to offer the properties for sale and place them on active tax rolls of the City of Manassas, twenty dash O two dash O seven dash O dash O six six. That's five oh six, five oh eight, five ten, and five twelve, Sixth Street. Twenty dash O two dash O seven dash O dash O six five, that is five oh four, Sixth Street, and four sixty-four Knox Avenue. Twenty dash O two dash O three dash O two six three is three sixty Schoonamaker Avenue. Twenty dash O two dash O three dash O two eighty-four, no address, it is a corner of Schoonamaker and Second Street. Twenty dash O two dash O three dash O two eight six is two seventeen, two seventeen, Second Street. Twenty dash O two dash O three dash O dash two six six is a vacant lot on Parkway. Twenty dash O two dash O three dash O dash two seven seven is a vacant lot on Schoonamaker. Twenty dash O two dash O three dash O dash one three nine is a vacant lot on Schoonamaker. Twenty dash O two dash O three dash O dash two eight two is two eighteen, two twenty, and two twenty-four Schoonamaker. See attachment R one?
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to transfer property of adjoining property of two O two Shawnee Avenue in the City of
I'd like to make a motion to transfer property of adjoining property of two-oh-two Shawnee Avenue in the City of Menneson with a property I D. number of twenty-dash-oh-two-dash-oh-eight-dash-oh-dash-three-eight-four to the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Menneson with a recommendation to offer it for sale to Carol Danilcheck at a price not to exceed five-hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to permit the Gate of Heaven Church located at six-forty-four Reed Avenue in City of Menneson to hold at no cost the three-on-three basketball tournament at the Anthony Eric Madison Senior Veterans Memorial Park, utilizing the park and recreation facilities and the Ninth Street Pavilion on August twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, from dawn to nine P. M.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
A motion to accept the Westmoreland Conservation Partnership Agreement but to refuse Addendum A, organizing public meetings without prior approval by city council. See attachment R two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Mayor, I got a question on that.
Okay.
Is there a cost to the city?
No.
Because I know there was one of them that was...
That was the amendment that we're refusing.
And are they okay with that?
Yep. Call the roll.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Councilman Orzantowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of twenty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and seventeen cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from Liquid Fuels account in the amount of three-thousand-one-hundred-and-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the Recreation Board Fund in the amount of five-hundred-and-eighteen dollars, seventy-five cents. All invoices are attached as attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Parks Account in the amount of three-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and thirteen cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from Line Usage Fund in the amount of seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay, approve the transfer of seventy-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents from the General Fund to the Payroll Account to cover payroll expenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Make a mush, oh, no, let me see. I make a motion to pay the general account for life, health insurance payments for retired employees and families in the amount of eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and thirty-one cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
And this is the following balances as of tonight. ARP Fund has two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-ten dollars and eighty-nine cents. Debt Service has nine-hundred-and-ninety thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty dollars and eighty-five cents. Fire Escrow is twenty thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. Grant Fund has thirty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars. Line Usage has six-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-two, three, six-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars. Liquid Fuels has a hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and forty-two cents. Parks has forty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars, seventy-two cents. Payroll has three thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Recreation has two thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and twenty cents. Refuge has two-hundred-and-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. Payroll has, I think I did payroll, I did that, thank you. General Fund has seven-hundred-and-one thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. And the healthcare has three thousand, two-hundred and two dollars and ten cents. And that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Thomas, would you like to give us your report?
Mayor, I'm gonna defer that report as well as that live report until our next meeting on the twenty-fourth.
All right, thank you. Councilman John Nestor?
Thank you, honorable mayor. I'm gonna stand until next meet.
Okay, very good. Uh, Councilman Greger is not here. This time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment.
It was only three earlier.
Taxpayers should be treated like little kids in school, uh, timing them, okay? Maybe the taxpayers should be limiting how much money they should pay to the city based on your performance. Now, all you do is you go up here and you grandstand how you're doing things, okay? What happened to that, that guy that's supposed to come from Baltimore, from Maryland? He probably wanted money, that's why we don't see him here. And we don't need people to tell us plans, we need people here to produce industry and commerce. Now, we got this other issue here. That was a big bust, that July twenty-ninth, okay? When you go to a May Day Soviet Union or Red China parade, all you see is government vehicles, police, okay, and military. You don't see citizens in there, okay? And that's what we had here July twenty-ninth. Where were the citizens, okay? You limited them, and particularly you did a dishonor. The primary citizens that, that built that, uh, ten mill, or whatever it was, steel mill, where were? They came from white European background with a hard-working ethic. You didn't even include none of those people. Number two, the unions. You didn't even honor any union that, that, that supported the labor efforts to make Menneson be a productive war effort in World War One, World War Two. You didn't invite none of those. All you did was you picked a certain select groups of people that are in your circle of influence, and that's why, how many people did we see? I didn't see any middle-class or upper-class residents coming down here, okay? So that was a bust. And that's all you do, you pick certain things, okay? Like the street there, the, the parks. The parks, there's only four more weeks of summer, and that's it. And you still didn't even get that done. So, what do we got? Ninety-two percent of people don't need a trail. Ninety-two percent of people use cars. And we got part-holes. I'm gonna tell all you people, when you get part-hole damage, send the bills to this city because he ain't using. He's sitting on two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars that he should be employing to do the part-holes. Who's gonna do the part-holes? Okay, so as far as I'm concerned, you haven't completed any goal that you've set out. All you do is explain things. And this line storage, by the way, was done from the last two administrations, not this administration. And, and you give it like a progress report as if you had something to do with it.
My name is Pina. I'd like to ask a question to the chief. Chief, how many policemen we have on the force right now?
We have twelve full-time officers and five part-time.
So you have four full-time. What happened to those people that we hired a couple months ago?
Uh, we lost, last spring, we hired three. We lost one, he worked at Shalroyd, and we hired...
It's party here for time.
It's so damn stupid.
And we, whenever an officer left, we promoted, uh, we brought in one of the part-timers. Then another officer left, we brought in up another part-time. So, we're at twelve full-time, that includes myself, and four, uh, five part-timers.
Thank you, chief. So you basically lost some people, you got part-time, which means they're got a job somewhere else. Part-time's a work in somewhere else, and they come to Menneson to sleep. Uh, we got five cars in Menneson Police Car, but we also have, uh, the, uh, the guy who, the code enforcement officer who drives a piece of garbage you threw down, who should never pass inspection. At least you could do is lend him one of the police car.
We offered that.
Pardon?
We offered him that.
You offered him that. He said, when did you offer him?
When he had his truck in the shop.
Well, I talked to him last week, and he said you didn't offer him nothing. That's all I can tell you. And he also said, like, motor repair plant? You know, cutting the grass, I talked to him about that, and he said that he tried, but it ain't working. So evidently, there, you're just full of BS, that's all I can tell you. Let me ask you one question again, Mike. The, uh, the Me and My, that's a corporation, right?
No, they're not in corporation.
Is Me and My a corporation or not?
Nope.
Let me ask you a question, let him answer.
Yes, they're gonna be a corporation, and they're gonna, well, no, Ernie, the filing is in Harrisburg.
You're still not considered, you're not recognized.
But we're going, then, then... Then, when we have that...
Were you on the board?
Pardon me?
Were you on the Me and My board?
No.
I thought you were elected on Me and My.
No.
No?
No.
I just wanna ask you because, you know, I figured that you would...
No, I'm, I help them with, you know, operations and some of the things that they're doing, but I'm not a board member.
How much do they pay you for helping?
Zero.
What do they pay you for helping?
Zero. Nothing. Yes. You should believe it because I received nothing, yeah.
But you're not on that group?
Not on the board.
You help them, but other than that?
Right.
So, my only thing is the police car should go to the code enforcement officer, one of them, just because there was a piece of crap, let alone whom passed inspection, I bet you. But to come in front of a house with a car looking like that, I wouldn't want to near my place.
Well, he's got his truck back now.
Well, don't make no difference where, I'm just talking about what he had.
Right.
The other part, I talked to him about cutting the grass, just what he was talking about, in front of his house. It hasn't been cut for almost two years. Two years, front and back. And guess who lives in the back? I live in the back. I even asked him, you want me to get it done? I get it done. Simple, man. But you don't have no leadership. You got people that look at you and say, he's nothing, he's only your passing time.
Okay, your time to...
Madeline, this is thirty-two Shaw Drive, Menneson. Uh, I read about the idea of a community pavilion in the newspaper, and I, I hope you haven't signed any contracts for it or budgeted any money for it because I think we have an excellent venue already existing in Menneson, and that's the City Park. We have an amphitheater there with speakers and microphone, we have seating there. If it's an event where the people can bring blankets and folding chairs, then that's available too for them. There's pavilions that can be used, space for vendors with their products or foods that they're selling on the upper and the lower level. There's parking available, there's also bus transportation to, to the City Park. Uh, I have a little negative on you saying about the park, it's summer, it's over. That's not true, and the City Park, City Park has been used almost all year round unless there's a tremendous storm. Excuse me. And, and then you're not going anywhere if there's a really bad storm. So I think that we have better use for money that might be put into a pavilion. I realize how much some of those, the size that would need to be on that property would cost. And I think that if there are available monies or grants that are thinking about being used, that those also could be used in better ways within the city. We have a lot to be done, and every little penny counts. So I just wanted my opinion registered for that.
Thank you.
I got a question, Madeline. Would you say, oh, would you say?
I have an F Y I. Can you turn my, and that's, um, I noticed about the transfer of properties. I had looked for the transfer of property from the City of Menneson to the Redevelopment Authority for that piece of property that has aggravated me, which is meaningless now for the library. And I never could find any minutes that had that transfer in it or anything in Harrisburg that had a transfer of that. So I don't know if you ever wanna just put that on record and just forget about it either way, but I just, I mean, I've never found anything.
But that thing, that was... Madeline? That, you talking about the property that's now has that gentleman's garage on it?
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, the City of Menneson property.
That? That was always redevelopment, even when I was on the redevelopment, it was. Oh, yeah.
Who knows, it's a downtown City of Menneson property. In fact, you said that to me when I was here complaining about how that all...
Your turn.
Oh, I have a couple of questions, but one question I have for you, Lois. Since they have torn up Ninth Street, I haven't been coming around going to Sixth Street to get back up on the hill. And I've been doing this for the past three weeks. And there is three garbage bags that's sitting on that hill, and I think they've been there ever since you've cleaned up Sixth Street. Sixth Street Park on the cleanup day. It's been sitting there.
No, we did another one since then. And you see, we didn't do another one too.
Well, yeah, but it's been sitting there for three weeks.
No, that's the second cleanup we did. We went back down.
But what I'm saying is still there.
No, but that was just a week ago.
They couldn't have been, because I've been coming down that hill for three weeks.
No, because we have to do it again this weekend, too. There, you see, there's another, we've done it again. There's about three or four of us that keep doing it because somebody keeps throwing McDonald's bags out there. If you see, there's more out there. It's again, again, right.
But what I'm saying is those same trash bags has been there for three weeks.
No, they took the first set, then we did another set.
When did you do the other set? Because I've been coming down there for three weeks.
Oh, yeah, I come up there every day, too.
And the police sits right up there on that little alcove from McKee, right there where the cobblestones is, they sit there and they look right at the trash bags.
I haven't even seen the police there lately. But we'll be doing it again, so they'll be going.
Okay, well, I hope you just pick it up soon.
Yeah, we'll be doing it again.
As a matter of fact, somebody should leave this meeting right now and go pick them up.
No, we'll be doing it again, so they'll get them.
The other question is, you said something about the line usage, is that the twenty-seven dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay, but we've been paying that, well, wasn't it twenty-seven dollars? But we've been paying into that fund...
For years.
As long as I've been back here. So what happens to the money? And where does it go? And is it accounted for? Because we should have more money in that line usage fee than you stated. Because I think before you got into office, it was somewhere around the million-dollar thing. Before you got in the office, because I think we discussed that when you were, we were meeting over there. But I'd just like to know, who keeps account of where that money is spent? Well, like I'm saying, because I've been counting it because I work really hard to pay my sewage bill, and I'd like to know where that twenty-seven dollars of my money goes. And who's, who, are you accountable for that, Tony?
I know usually what goes in there, but this is...
But you don't know what goes out?
Yeah. Well, yeah, because what I allocate to go out to pay a bill to that. But when you're talking about, let me, let me get this straight, okay? I wanna make sure I'm not right, I might be wrong on this, but isn't the three-hundred-thousand dollars that the audit found that was, was unexpectedly taken out of that fund and not repaid that this council turned around and addressed at the very first part of the year this year? The audit finding found the three-hundred, no, it was over four-hundred-thousand dollars.
It was a lot.
It was four-hundred-thousand dollars, and it wasn't Mr. Mavreckis' tenure that did it all. Let's be honest and clear about it. Lou's tenure did some. But the grand, the over three-hundred-thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, if I remember, and I don't know why that number sticks in my head, okay? The auditors found, last year, if you remember when they presented the audit, that there was a... Okay, the auditors found last year, if you remember when they presented the audit, that there was a removal of that funds. And there's no record in city council minutes authorizing for that to come out of there. So if you're asking, you thought there was a million, but there was only a couple hundred thousand in there, or, I'm sorry, three or four hundred thousand, there was six hundred thousand dollars in there, but there should have been over a million. I think that's been addressed many times. That's what happened to that fund. It was tapped. I'm sorry?
Which administration did that?
The prior administration.
Master O?
Yes. And we, if you remember, are backcharging things to that fund so we can try to pay that debt down that the auditors have said we still owe. We owe you, the taxpayers, that money back. So if things, and the street crew is doing things like anything, catch basins and all that stuff, we're taking those charges that would go generally to their department or the, or the general fund, okay? And they're being charged back to whittle that amount down. Now, I'll be honest, I don't know where that amount is right now.
But see, I was under the understanding that that twenty-seven dollars was for our sewage infrastructure.
It is.
It is.
That's what he's saying.
But somebody used it besides what it was designed for.
So payroll or something like that.
I can't, I can't attest to what it was, what it was used for. Well, honestly, I mean, I'm being honest with you.
All right, but that was a lot of money.
It was a lot of money.
And I'm concerned about my twenty-seven dollars that I have to pay every month.
Better not.
Not until you can show me how that money is used going in and coming out. I think we deserve to know that.
Absolutely.
Okay, and there's another question.
See, it's not that she doesn't deserve, but he didn't put that on, okay, with me.
Yes, he did put it on. I'm talking over my three minutes and you need to, or you need to stay out of my three minutes.
Hey, settle, settle down, settle down.
There we go, you go.
Okay, another question is, this vacant property on Parkway. Is it where the house that caught fire last year?
No.
Okay, is this the property where Henry Donner's house was?
No.
Okay, my question is, why are you selling property on Parkway when you will not open up that hill that's on, what is that? Fourth Street in front of the Eisenberg's building? Because when that house caught fire up on Parkway, those firemen had to bring that heavy equipment all the way up those steps to go to an abandoned house. Now, why would you sell a lot up there? Why, just tell me why. Are you gonna improve that? Or are you gonna cut in off a re and come in so you'll have another way of in and out?
The lot that, the lot that we sold today, tonight, is a wedge that sits on a corner. It's too small for any sort of a building or anything else. The house that's sitting right here wanted that property.
Well, it doesn't state that in here.
But that's what it was.
But it didn't state it in here.
It said it was adjoining pro-
If it states it in there, then I wouldn't have asked the question.
It said it was an adjoining property.
Well, you see, that's what I'm saying, just for not being transparent at all.
Well, I just answered your question. Thank you.
Wait, I think I might have one other thing, hold on. All right, and you're gonna have somebody to pick up that trash, Lois?
Thank you.
On Sixth Street.
I'll talk to Ross.
Anybody else?
Ed LaFever on Keystone Drive. Just two questions. Uh, Mayor, let me quote something from, uh, July twenty-eighth article, city trying to get delinquent, uh, I guess the refuge collection, the garbage bills. There's one paragraph in here, I think, was attributed to you. Uh, Mosher said, getting the, getting that program, which was a previous program, back for a temporary time period would mean at least some of the delinquent bills would be paid bringing in money now. What bothers me is the next sentence. Currently, there is almost no collection of delinquent funds. So my question, why is there, currently, there is almost no collection of delinquent funds? Does a council member take care of that?
No, we turn over our, our delinquent garbage bills to a company called Portnoy. They're a legal firm that specializes in collection of debt.
Isn't someone mentioned it here?
That is what that was all about. We've been trying to work with Portnoy for several months to come up with a amnesty program whereby they would forgive some of the penalties and interest in return for payment of those delinquent tax bills for a short window, say October to November. And we're still working on that.
Well, the, the ending paragraph says, uh, Mayor Mosher still, said the city is still interested in amnesty, but it needs, what are they called, Portnoy?
Right.
To buy into the program in order to be able to offer it, so they didn't buy into it yet.
I had a conversation with them today. They're getting very, they're, they're talking much better. We're thinking about October to November timeframe.
The other question. I was surprised, uh, this insert about delinquent taxes. I, I wanna know if you would be surprised with this. This states, Menneson Fireman's Relief Association, three point one acres in building at twelve, then twelve ninety-five Grand Boulevard. It goes on the tax rolls for over thirty-five thousand dollars. How, how, how would that occur?
Well, they didn't pay their taxes, but they in fact did sell that building that is caught up now.
So this shouldn't really be in here?
It should be, they should be current. I haven't checked it, but they should be current.
Okay, that's about a week old, right?
Pardon me?
That document's about a week old? Maybe two weeks? Yeah.
Yeah, one week.
From the Trib?
Pardon me?
Tribune Review?
No.
That?
Valley Independent.
That was in the Valley Independent then?
Yes.
Okay. That, I saw it in the Tribune Review.
One more, one more fa- question.
Fast.
Fast question for Mr., uh, for Mr. Delfons. I looked into that act for when a city gets into, I'd ask you about the debt level. How, how much can be borrowed or how much debt can a city, uh? That document has a extremely difficult formula.
That, that's quite difficult.
Extremely difficult formula. And, and I want to ask, do you or anybody, do you, is somebody in the city focused on that? In other words, instead of falling into debt, is that formula used by the year to see if the city's going well? What, what, when do you start using that formula?
That, whenever a municipality goes and borrows or finances, um, things like bonds, the USDA loans, they're required to go through that process, to run the formula, to tell the state, this is what we're permitted to borrow based on the factor.
Well, we're, there's a, a big debt being borrowed toward the sewage fund. I mean, wouldn't this figure into that formula?
It did.
It did.
It did?
Yeah. And the, the thing with...
So you, you actually know at this point where we're at, at this, uh, in this formula?
No, not with the sewage fund, and here's why.
No, not just the sewage.
It, there's debt that's funded by the debt service millage that everybody pays every year, right? That's where it comes into play because you can only raise taxes so much. With the line usage fund, I don't wanna say that it's an unlimited amount, but the city has a way to raise that line usage fund, just like they did for the USDA loans, the Penn Vest loans. So the calculation for that type of borrowing is a little bit different.
But...
If you're asking for a number off the top of my head, there's, that's not how it works.
Menneson really doesn't know what their debt limit is.
They can figure out the calculation for the debt limit for things like municipal bonds, for that type of revenue.
With the mayor, do you be doing that periodically?
Next, next, the audit will show that to you next week, yeah. It'll show you what our debt is.
Yeah, but if you're asking for a cap, it, it doesn't work that way. There isn't a number today that I could tell you, yeah, the city...
No, 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 I'm, I'm just saying, is it an ongoing calculation?
It always will be, yes.
By who?
Whenever the city would go to borrow any more money.
But you would actually know if that borrowing was really out of hand, I mean, too high?
Yeah, because if it is, DCD will not permit the borrowing.
I see. And then if, if that debt limit is actually surpassed, then Act forty-seven comes in.
It, it, the debt limit can never be surpassed because when a municipality borrows money, they file an application and DCD says, yeah, no, you can't borrow that amount.
I just wanna say two things. One, what are you gonna do between now and December to bring a private perm or a private company or some developer that's private to do something here in, um, Menneson to plant a seed of business? Do you have any plans? Who, who are you gonna invite? And, and, I don't wanna hear, uh, Nehemiah and all these other nonprofits because they're not gonna bring any money in this group. So, so what are your plans between now and then? Because there's no tax money coming in between now until January. So, so how are you guys gonna do it?
We're gonna work hard, but your time is up. Thank you.
Yeah, wait a minute, everybody here got more than twelve minutes because I was looking at my phone. And I was under three minutes. A, a, and that's unfair. You don't turn it off on certain people and let them talk and then on me, you're letting it run. You do that next time, I'm, I'm really gonna complain.
Okay, thank you. You can come up to the auditorium, announce yourself, your address.
My name is Howard Lokes. My name is Norman Madison. Other than twenty-two Court Avenue, Menneson.
Mm-hmm.
Can you ask one question? Why do you pay the rec board?
We don't pay the rec board anything. There's volunteer positions.
Oh, you ain't giving five hundred dollars here?
No.
Okay, okay. Recreation, what do you, what do you do with that money?
With what money?
Recreation money.
Like I said, what money?
Money you get for recreation for the city.
The, any money that comes into the recreation, as an example, the, the person that, that rents the space below the, the gym, that goes into the rec board, but it is in the general fund.
What's the rec board do with it?
Pay the bills.
They're not good for nothing. They don't do anything. So why do you have a rec board?
This could be argued.
Beg your pardon?
It could be argued.
Oh, you, so you're just, they're just there, right?
No, they have, they, they're a group. Come to their meeting, see what they do.
They come to the meeting, they do nothing.
When was the last time you were at their meetings?
What's used to having a meeting if you ain't doing nothing?
But you're not there to see if they're not doing anything.
Give me a break. You see these kids running around here? They don't have nothing to do in the civic center. It's, you might as well burn it down because they ain't, you have to...
There is events that happen there every day.
No, it isn't, 'cause I'm down there every day.
Well, look, you need to go down there.
You're lying. They come down there every single solitary day.
Talk to Julian, he's down there.
I was down there this morning. I watched the guys put up ping pong tables, two truckloads of them.
Now they can play ping pong.
You had to be joking me. I, I, you know what, I don't understand. I don't understand why.
Our youth program is extremely important to all of council. Everybody here on council believes in our youth. Let me finish talking.
You ain't doing nothing for them.
We are doing lots. We spend a lot of money on them. We've bought tables for them. We bought all kinds of appliances. We've spent, what, forty thousand dollars this year on...
What good is that stuff if they can't use it? You ain't allowed in there for certain days.
Then go talk to Julian and he will schedule an event for you.
No, you ain't paying Ju- Julian enough for him to be down there for eight hours. I ran that place for eight hours myself.
Okay.
I ran that building myself, okay? And then the little bit of money that he makes, he has to turn it into the city. Why can't he keep that money and put it back into the civic center?
It gets put back in the civic center.
That's what I did.
It gets put back in the civic center.
I ran that place for a year and didn't have no problem with the city. I paid electric, I paid the water. I paid a few dollars rent. I mean, I couldn't pay a whole lot, but I had kids. And it was open every day from eight o'clock in the morning to nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night. And I had no problem. Why don't you just give it to the kids? Or give it to somebody that'll run that place and let it, let it be, be for somebody. You ever take that clock and shove it?
Your time's up. Thank you.
I mean, does that make sense? If you give it to somebody that'll run it and, and keep it, keep it going.
Thank, thank you.
It's better than the city paying for it.
I just wanna add a comment. I'm just sorry.
You know what? You could take that clock and shove it up your ass.
Yeah, 'cause it ain't worth, it's been a work.
Does anybody else have any comments they'd like to make? Is it entirely different subject? If it's the same subject, your time is up. If you've got a different subject, I'll allow it. You can, we have no money for please, for additional pleas. Could I have a motion for adjournment? With what? Let me put it this way. We spend, we spend one million dollars on the police every year and it's, dollars well spent. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
John. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think anybody would... I didn't see you object to anything. He let you talk over three, you know, he let you talk over three minutes. You didn't, but then also...